It's a Susan show tonight, isn't it?
It is. I'm just going to sit still here for a second. Okay, continuing with the food analogy, here's the meat and potatoes of tonight's presentation. The R Budget Development Report tonight will kick off with kind of a state of the state of our current year budget. This is how we started, similar to last year, we look at how much of our budget is remaining with five months left of our fiscal year. And right now, we've used forty-six point nine three percent of the budget and we're, tonight, we're primarily focusing on the general and supplemental general funds, since the bulk of our funds flow through here before they get transferred to other funds. We have fifty-three point oh seven of the budget remaining. And this, this ratio makes sense when you look at the next slide, which is our pattern of spending over the fiscal year. Our, if you take the, our budget line items and you spread it evenly over twelve months, you'd be at around the dotted line on the chart. But our spending does not work that way. We, again, we start slow in July, which makes sense, students aren't in school. And we gradually go up, you can see as we peak a little bit in November, that's typically when we're paying longevity payments. We drop in December, and then we go up again, we flatten out, and then we have a big spike in June, when we turn around and we pay our teachers out for their contract pay. So, we have to, we plan for this as part of our budgeting process. So that's why those percentages being a little off makes sense, because we need to have enough budget authority remaining to make sure that we can cover that lump sum at the end of June. If you look over the past five years, at, at our historical percent of budget remaining compared to where we are in the fiscal year, we've been relatively steady, fifty-seven, fifty-six percent. We did dip just a little bit this fiscal year, but that was primarily because we've made some transfers a little bit earlier than we normally do. No real reason, other than we're just trying to, try a new thing this month. So, that's why you'll see a spike last month, if you, or last year, if you looked, you'd see that spike in March, when we made those transfers, so. But to share with the board, there has been nothing, knock on wood, unusual that has occurred yet in this budget cycle, although there's quite a bit of budget year left, that would cause us to have any budgetary concerns as we look towards the end of the fiscal year. Everything at this point is proceeding according to plan. And short of a major weather event of some sort, or catastrophic event, we, we look to be in good shape as we move into the last few months of the school year. So that brings us to our fiscal year twenty budgeting process, which will begin with this first presentation to you tonight, as we normally do, to tell you that we have begun work to accumulate information related to our fixed cost increases. That would include what we estimate will happen with our utilities, with our property casualty insurance, with our contracts that have a CPI index built into them, and similar fixed costs that we need to cover in the next budget year. We will be looking forward to some of the work that the Strategic Plan Committee is doing with you in April, so that we make sure that our budget is wrapping around the strategic plan, as opposed to budget driving those goals. And we wanted to take a little bit of opportunity to show some, remind both the board and our listening audience of where we have invested funds over the past two years, and give the board a little bit of return data on how those investments are performing. So, if you look at our fiscal year eighteen budget investments, and I didn't have a tremendous amount of time to dig into a lot of these, but I kind of wanted to highlight a few things. Certainly, the creation of the homework hotline has been very successful. From inception to the end of January, we've served eighteen hundred calls. This year alone, compared to last year's pace, we're not quite going to double, but we'll be close. Sixth grade math seems to be a popular topic, from what I was looking at over the weekend. So, the JAG program, another success story, we're serving over three hundred and ninety students in that program with great results. As we look into nineteen, and the salary structure and recruitment item there at the top, that's actually a two-year initiative. Some of the highlights there, we've improved our entry levels, starting teacher salary, over seven, up over seven percent in two years. Also, our voluntary turnover, not including retirements, is down a percent and a half. So I think we're starting to see some results related to those efforts, and that's before the calendar change, which hopefully will, will continue to push that number down. The parents as teachers, if you recall, we added just a little bit of FTE last year, or for this fiscal year, sorry. But fifty-seven more families are already being served, up over a hundred families total, I think it's a hundred and eighteen. So that's, that's a success story for sure. But even more so, I think, is one of our biggest successes to date, is the reopening of Town East and the expansion of the learning centers. The, the learning centers in Chesterey Lewis, over eighteen hundred students are being served through those learning centers, which is a tremendous amount of kids running through for credit recovery, and, and basically serving as a safety net for a lot of our students who might otherwise fall further and further behind. And then Town East has already graduated thirty-eight students, since it's been opened, and that's, we're not through the year. We, we think we're on track for over a hundred. And two hundred and forty-three students have been served in that program. So I think there's a lot of good success stories to be told, a good return on the investments that we're making. And personally, I'm pretty happy with the grants department, I wanted it just for oversight. But certainly, they've already received a hundred and fifty-eight thousand in grants, just since they've kind of got up and running, and they have five million dollars in applications working right now. So that's the good news, and of course, we balance our good news with some challenges. Related to our fiscal year twenty budget planning, we are faced with quite a bit of unpredictability and legislative challenge. So certainly, first of all, the state's overall financial condition remains kind of a question mark. January tax receipts were seven point four-four percent below estimates, and a hundred and one million dollars less than this time last January. Fiscal year-to-date receipts are thirty-two million less than estimates, but a hundred and eight million over this same time last year. So we're, we're not sure what this is telling us yet. I think there's a lot of unpredictability related to how the state is performing financially. Are we on the edge of a potential recession? We just don't know all this information yet, I think that's something we're going to have to watch in the coming months. Also related to our unpredictability condition is the threat of a potential federal government shutdown for the second time. We have, we were very lucky in that a lot of our title and IDEA program budgets had already been appropriated, so they were not impacted by the federal government shutdown. But nutrition services, speaking of, was not one of those. So we had actually received a letter from KSDE that during the first shutdown, had it continued, that reimbursements under that program could be at risk. So again, if we face a second shutdown, this might be another area that becomes a risk factor for us. And then, activity at the, at the state legislative level, where we sit certainly, is that the inflation question remains unanswered at this point. The Kansas Supreme Court put forth to the legislature that it needed to address an inflation factor within that formula, if they were going to use the Montoy Safe Harbor argument, which they did in their, in their case. So the Kansas Board of Education has calculated a number that it feels would meet that requirement, and their number is ninety million dollars. We had maybe held out a little hope that we might be able to go right into the legislative session, get an inflation answer, and move on down the road. But it does not appear that's probably going to happen as quickly as we might have hoped. Instead, we've had bills on tax cuts and capers funding, and then certainly debate around whether the formula itself needs to be changed, a potential for a constitutional amendment. So a lot of conversations that do not specifically address inflation at this point. So the opportunity for a quick response, I think, is probably gone, and we are, we're going to be in another waiting game to see what happens. April fifteenth is the due date for briefs to the Kansas Supreme Court, May ninth is the date for oral arguments. So why are these challenges so critical to our budget planning process? If you look at our sources of revenue, you can see that seventy-three percent of our, our budget is state revenue. So, be, really beyond our control to, to exert any sort of plan, other than to wait to see what happens. And certainly, we can, we can advocate on our behalf, but we are, our, our go-forward rests squarely in the hands of what's going to happen at the state legislative level. Eleven percent is federal revenue, again, not something that you, as a board, have a whole lot of control over. We, again, are going to get the federal revenues where due. If the shutdown happens, we may be delayed in getting some of those revenues. Not, not an area we, we have, we have any ability to really change. So what's left is fifteen percent of the budget that is local revenues. So eighty-five percent state and federal, fifteen percent local, local revenues being primarily fees and the mill levy, okay? But that's why those, those areas of unpredictability impact our budget so significantly. So certainly, as we're budget planning and keeping in mind all of those challenges, you know, our fixed cost increases average around four million dollars. We have significant budgetary pressures that continue. We made reference to the deferred maintenance a little bit earlier, if you recall, from the previous board presentation we gave on capital outland facilities, we're about eighty-five million dollars behind in our deferred maintenance. And we have scheduled over the next ten years, two hundred and twenty-eight million coming due. So this is an ongoing challenge for us to try to manage all this within our current budget. Certainly, the competition to hire staff in an environment where unemployment is low continues to be a challenge for us, and why we, we really need to continue that focus on compensation through, for recruitment and retention, because it is such a, a challenging environment to go find qualified teachers, particularly in hard-to-fill areas. The step catch-up situation, where we weren't giving raises there for a few years, and so several of our groups are behind on steps, remains an issue. And then, obviously, increasing technology needs, you heard about our curriculum purchase tonight, it has an online component. So that, of course, drives the need for more technology in the classrooms, and then programs for our high-need populations. All of these items continue to drive budgetary pressures. So what are our options at this point? You know, it is my job to provide the board some, some items it can control, and the local option budget option is one of those. So, just a little bit of historical context, well before my time, but the local option budget, years and years ago, was actually meant to be a true supplemental budget to the general fund, which would allow local school districts to, through their own local tax effort, do things within their district that maybe differentiated them from other districts. So if they wanted a agricultural program, or something unique, they were able to use those dollars in that fashion. Because of school funding challenges over the years, the, the local option budget has become more of an operational budget. It behaves very similarly to the general fund for most districts, because they have to utilize those dollars to just pay for utilities and, and operational expenses that wouldn't otherwise be paid, or couldn't be, couldn't be afforded through the general fund. So, what I would like to at least open up for some discussion is, the board could consider the option of increasing its LOB authority up to thirty-three percent of the general fund, which could generate up to eleven and a half million dollars, which would be partially funded through state aid and partially funded through the mill levy. So this slide is important. Why does this decision need to be made before the district knows about inflation? So the Kansas Board of Education, and this is in statute, requires notification of any intent to increase the LOB by April first. So even if the legislature would respond on the inflation question tomorrow, we wouldn't know that the Supreme Court will have accepted that until after the, sometime after the oral briefs in May, whenever they would come down. So the timing isn't just not working in our favor, as far as to wait for an answer on inflation. And the next question is even more important. Does the district have to increase the LOB percentage, even if it has the authority to do so? And the answer to that is no. I am not, well, I'm, I'm giving you an option tonight, I'm certainly not proposing we do anything as far as raising the mill levy to raise the LOB. What I'm telling you is you have an option to go get authority to do so. You do not have to, to make a decision to raise a tax at this point in time. And there would be, certainly be ample opportunity for the board to consider that, and get public input as we go through the budget process for this year. But we have to, we have to inform KSDE that we have an interest in moving on that LOB authority to thirty-three percent by April first. So, by April first. So just to tell, to let the board and our listeners know, what is paid for currently out of the LOB, the big-ticket items are regular education, transportation. So transportation's a big item for us out of the LOB, fuel. Certain compliance departments like finance and HR, a big chunk of technology exists in the LOB, and all our utilities, or the majority of our utilities are out of the LOB. But sixty percent of this fund actually gets transferred to support other funds. CTE, bilingual, special ed, and at-risk receive transfers from the LOB. So the majority of this fund is actually supporting teachers in classrooms, and forty percent is used for the, those other expenditures. It is a little bit like getting pre-approved for a loan. If you're going to go out car shopping, it's nice to know you can get a car, because you've already been pre-approved for the loan process. You don't have to buy the car, but you at least know you could. This process is going to be similar. We can go out and get this authority, and I'll go through the steps that we'll have to take, but you do not have to use it. It's just an option out there that you could, if you were faced with a certain set of circumstances that you felt it was important for us to move. So just giving you a few statewide facts, as we kind of explore this tonight. Of the two hundred and eighty-six school districts in Kansas, eighty-five, or close to thirty percent, have LOB authority greater than thirty percent. Eighty of those eighty-five have the full thirty-three percent authority, four have thirty-one, and one has thirty-one and a half. The average authority used by the group, even though they have authority up to thirty-three percent, is thirty-two point five eight. So even though you have authority up to thirty-three in those school districts, you have the option to move up and down as, as you need to. Included in that group of eighty-five, I've included a few area districts and a few of the larger districts across the state. So this chart shows you the, the history of our mill levy, since the two thousand nine, ten school year, with a forecasted year of what the, the mill levy could look like, if we would pursue having the authority, and then potentially using the authority. So that would have to be, that would be a two-step decision, to move down the authority, and then actually implement the authority. But if you look, for the most part, in the early years, we were sitting at fifty-seven, fifty-six mills. We dipped down in fourteen, fifteen, go back up. Those, if you recall, those ups and downs were when we were getting equalization aid, and we lost equalization aid, and we'd get it back. So you have that seesaw there for a few years. And then we've leveled out in the fifty-three and change range. So if you look, we're at fifty-three and change for eighteen, nineteen. Right now, we would estimate one point six mills, if you would exercise the full thirty-three percent. It would be between the fifty-three and fifty-five range, if you exercised something less than thirty-three percent. You'll notice, I've, I've kind of marked this chart, that bottom tier, the blue, under the dark line, that's the twenty mills that by statute has to go directly to the state. We have absolutely no ability to control that, there, it just is what it is. That middle section, those are restricted by purpose, so that's bond and interest and capital outlay. If we were not making debt service, we could not charge a mill, that, that mill goes away. You can't assess that mill and use it for other purposes, it is specifically for debt service. Capital outlays similarly restricted, as far as for maintenance of buildings and for technology as allowed in one of the more recent formula changes.
Clarification?
Yes.
In other words, of any kind of local tax money that comes in, that's what you're saying, that that bottom part doesn't even come to us?
Yeah, right, it goes directly to the state, it never even comes through our books. Now, it comes back to us, just like it does to all Kansas districts, in the form of general state aid. But that twenty mills that's raised locally goes to the state and comes back as categorized state aid.
Maybe.
Depending on your, how many students you have, and your waitings, and all of those factors. So, but then, so the only local control, real local control, that you have some flexibility, is that, the supplemental general fund or the local option budget, where you have some ability to go up and down. So just some, some Q and A, if you will. What would the district do with additional funds? Because we're going to get that question. If there is no inflation adjustment, so if we go through this process and there's no inflation adjustment, the funds, and I should say, could, would, be used to support overall budget needs, including compensation, new positions, fixed costs, deferment, all of those budgetary pressures we just talked about. If there is an inflation adjustment, the district could stay at thirty percent. Or it could look at funding additional initiatives, deferred expenditures, that would be a choice the board could make. But it would be the choice the board could make, because it has the authority to make it. Right now, it doesn't, we don't have any flexibility in this area to even have the discussion. If the board would not use any additional authority for two thousand nineteen, twenty, that would be available for future discussion. Because once you have the authority, it's not year-to-year to renew, you have it, basically, for as long as you have it. Just, again, a couple of facts that might come to play. What would our total local option budget be? Right now, at thirty percent, it's sitting at a hundred and fifteen million dollars. If we would move up to thirty-three percent, that would be a hundred and twenty-six million dollars. How much of the LOB is currently funded by state aid? We, we are currently at fifty-four point two-nine percent equalized, but this does change annually. It can go up a little bit and go down a little bit, depends on the overall assessed valuation across the state. How much does one mill raise for USD two-five-nine? One mill raises about two point eight million dollars, based on our last assessed evaluation, assessed valuation. How much could the mill levy go up? Again, this would be, have to be a decision that gets made at the time that we're putting the budget in front of our public. But if we did recommend exercising the thirty-three percent, right now, with a bunch of assumptions in place, it would approximately go up one point six mills. But that's a lot of unknowns we're, we're just putting into place. We're assuming a similar state aid support, similar property value, similar collection level. So, again, that's not a hard and fast number, that's going to fluctuate as we get closer to the end of the year. We'll have a little bit more firm estimate for you. How much more would that cost a property owner? At the full thirty-three percent, around eighteen dollars a year. So if you break that down into one percent increments, six, twelve, eighteen. Okay, so, the, the steps in this process, should the board want to, to entertain this as an option, school districts must notify the State Board of Education by April first of each year, that they want to increase their LOB percentage. This is so the state can start to build their budget as well. The board may adopt by resolution such budget in an amount not to exceed that the state prescribed thirty-three percent, you can't go higher than thirty-three. The adoption of a resolution requires a majority vote of the members of the board. Then we would need to publish in the newspaper, having general circulation in the school district, and that is subject to protest petition. Our patrons would have forty days to gather signatures. The resolution may be adopted unless a petition in opposition of the increase is signed by no less than ten percent of qualified electors of the school district, and is filed with the county election officer. If that petition is filed, then we basically go into a decision on whether we want to have an election related to this topic. So that's kind of the, the steps in the process, should we want to explore this as a possibility. So, kind of in closing, what would be our next steps here? Certainly, we're going to keep a very close eye on legislative action at the state level, the government, federal government level, kind of how the state's doing financially, all of those challenges, we're going to be watching very closely. We're going to be collecting data on our fixed cost estimates to present to the board in the coming months. We'll be looking forward to the strategic plan work, to make sure that our budget is aligning with what the board's priorities are. And then, certainly, we would like the board to gather feedback and provide direction on the LOB to us no later than March, so that we can get it to KSDE by April first. So kind of to recap the presentation as a whole, before opening for questions, our fiscal year nineteen budget has been proceeding according to plan, and the priorities set were followed, and we are seeing return on those investments that we've made over the past two years. Fiscal year budget planning will begin, kind of again, with a lot of uncertainties in place, without an inflation answer. But we are going to plan around the four strategic plan goals that we know of, and certainly, we'll, we'll hear more about that as we move through the coming months. The uncertainty that we do face around the budget, as the legislator, legislature considers how to respond to the Supreme Court, is further complicated by federal pressures and the overall economy of the state. And finally, the board could consider increasing the maximum local option budget authority to thirty-three percent in light of this uncertainty. Again, this is not a decision to increase the LOB or the mill levy at this point. This is more of a pre-approval process to get additional authority, should it be needed. Because the district is required to inform KSD in writing by April first, and so we would need direction next month.
Ernestine?
Let me ask some questions that are really just clarifying questions. So if we apply for expanding our LOB option by April first, and the legislature does come through and give the amount of money that's needed to make it so that our increased money comes in to meet inflation for the, we can back up and say we don't need to use it, our LOB thing?
Correct, right. This is just authority to, to be able to move, should we need to move, or should the board decide to move because of certain items it feels is important. If it, if it doesn't want to, we don't.
So, again, the analogy of the, the pre-approved to buy a car, just because we get pre-approved in a bank, we don't have to necessarily go ahead and spend that, if the legislature comes through and meets the inflation needs?
And, that's, that's a hundred percent correct. And even if, even if we wouldn't receive an inflation, that would still be the board's decision on whether to utilize its authority. It is fully within your hands to instruct, yes, we'd want to, no, we don't.
So even if we, even if the legislature doesn't do the inflation, we can still choose to do it, or do a little piece of it, or not do it at all?
Correct.
This is just because they have a deadline of April first, that we're pushed to be able to have to ask the bank, in effect, for our right to have a pre-approved LOB? The bank being the part of education?
I, I think it's, we have so few areas that we can be ahead of the game and, and exercise fiscal prudence. This seems to me to be one of those areas where we could at least be proactive in getting the ability to move. And then, if we, if we, if we, you instruct me to, to move on it, I can. But if you instruct me, no, then we have to go and we look at other things that we can do.
It does seem to be prudent to at least ask them if we can do it, and go ahead for the April first deadline, and then keep our fingers crossed and write our letters to the legislature, and I'll give you that address if you get to.
Mike?
I wanted to bring up, one of the misconceptions that we have is, is we're one of the few governing bodies that don't set our own budget, like the city. is we're one of the few governing bodies that don't set our own budget, like the city and the county. They go out and say, our tax revenues are going to be this, and we're going to spend this fiscally. We get told what we're going to be spending. And this is the only part that we get to have an option on, as far as income. And, you know, it's kind of concerning that, you know, one mil levy only raises $2.8 million in Wichita. And $2.8 million really doesn't pay many bills for us, sadly to say. So, it is something that, if we were to lose our inflationary part of the budget that we're hoping to get this year, we would be in a fiscal deficit again, and we would have to take, figure out what we're going to cut again.
We would be faced with making some choices, yes.
And I can tell you, after five straight years of cutting budgets, I'm not going to do it again. And so, it's important that we kind of look at this. Yes, we'll get, you know, the taxpayers won't be happy because they're going to pay, what did you say, $18 a year for a $100,000 house? But if we don't, we're going to, you know, we're going to lose more programs that, you had a great list of programs that we did this year and last year. And, you know, if we start losing those, what's the point? I mean, these are kind of some of the things that we need to look at and go, it's kind of like the calendar. It's good, not good for everybody, but it's good for some. And we need to figure out what that balance is. And if we, we've talked about this for a couple of years, I think even before you were CFO. And we didn't want to do it because of the taxpayers. And I think it's something that we need to look hard and fast at. Because if we don't, like I said, I'm not going to cut a budget again. I'm done with that.
Our kids need to have a scan.
Our kids need this, and...
I think your, I think your point, as far as that we do operate differently than, say, a city or county government. You know, when assessed valuation goes up, even at the same mil levy, those organizations reap the benefits. And we do a little bit in bond, and we do in capital. But in the LOB, we don't. That goes, if we are receiving more tax dollars, we get less state aid. We don't drive more funding to this line item, which again, means that we're kind of capped at that, at that level, which again, is a lot of money. There's no doubt that's a lot of money. But you've seen that list of budgetary pressures and items that we have invested in. And to kind of come back in at this point and say, okay, we're, because we didn't, you know, we haven't addressed this inflation, and we don't have a lot of other budget flexibility, then I'm going to have to bring to the board some choices to make. You know, that is, that's a challenge and a step backwards, potentially. Again, a lot of unknowns at this point. That's why it's just an option to give us the flexibility if we need it at the time. We may not.
It's better to be safe than sorry. I do want to point out one more thing on your, I don't know which page it is, but it's a lot, Lena, the LOB option Q and A, I think it's the first page. There, I want to make sure that people are understanding that the total, this is the total LOB on the first line. We're not going to get $11 million more. That's the total LOB, not just, you know, we're going to get whatever we raise, minus the deductions, plus the minuses, and all of that.
I'm sorry, which page are we on?
LOB questions and answers.
Next, one, right there.
This one, okay.
You know, we're not going to get $126 million if we take it. We're not going to receive $126 million more.
Not more, no, that's the total, that would be the total budget.
Right.
Because we're sitting at the 115 right now.
Right, and I just want to make sure that people are realizing that we're not going to raise that kind of money by doing this. And that's not part of the deal. It's because that's what people will look at and go, well, you're raising $11 million more? Why do we need to do that? And that's, I want to make sure that that's seen. I appreciate what you've done. And I think this is something that we really ought to consider pretty hard.
Ron?
Yeah, on the page where it says, why discuss this option now? The point where it says, what is paid for out of the LOB? It says, regular education, transportation. I can't remember the exact amount for our budget. Is it like 40 something million?
The 11 and a half million dollars was what we spent on regular ed transportation.
All right, I was way off, all right. And if, so what kind of bearing, well, I guess, they're going to come up for another contract, is that right?
We, our transportation contract, the 10th year is next year. So, we will be pursuing our next options related to that contract. Well, we've started, so we've started a little bit of that work that will continue. We don't have a firm number, as far as where that's going, other than up.
That's what I'm thinking, right, right. It's not going to go down.
No, it's not going to go down.
Okay, thank you.
Julie?
My question is kind of a follow-up to Ernestine's. We said that if we notify the Kansas Department of Ed that we want to have this option, then we don't have to utilize it if we do that. If we find out that we don't need to utilize the option, we don't need to. But if we don't notify the state,
Then you can't.
Then we have no choices, we're stuck with nothing.
You miss your April 1st deadline, you are at the state average, which right now is the 30%.
My question is, when was the last time we raised our LOB?
The... I'm not, I'm not, other than for equalization, I, not during the past 10 years that I've been here, but...
Because we've tried very hard to keep that LOB as low as possible for our taxpayers.
Yes, and the mil levy, we've really tried to keep it relatively stable. That's been, that's been a very purposeful goal of the board, that we don't have these, because some districts, you can see the big swings that aren't equalization-driven. Our goal is so that it's very stable. And the only time it has really gone up and down is when the formula has been kind of out of sync with the equitable pieces of the statute. But other than that, and I think we've been at 30 for quite a period of time, the hope would be, we would minimize the impact, hopefully, through assessed valuation going up again, we hope. So that, right now, we're estimating that 1.6, but that's assuming a flat assessed valuation. If we have a little bit of an increase, it could even be less than that.
Okay. And basically, we're being pushed into making a decision now based on the unknowns of what's going to happen with the budget in Topeka and the date of April 1st that we have to notify the state, correct?
That is pushing, that's going to push the decision. As far as, it may be a little bit speedier than you might have wanted to. But if we miss the April 1st deadline, then like Julie said, we have no options.
And if, I mean, I'm with Mike. He and I have been on the board long enough that, up until the last couple of years, we had to cut the budget every year, and that's just miserable. And it's not that we wouldn't look carefully at everything in our budget again, but it certainly would be nice to at least have some kind of an option if we get worst-case scenario out of Topeka.
I think that's, that's, you're 100% correct. And I will tell you, just from my side of the table, I would be very cautious to bring you a recommendation to move on it. Because once you move on it, you don't get to utilize it again. So, I would want to be sure that we've exercised every bit of budgetary prudence before we would bring that recommendation. Because the minute we build that into the budget, it's gone. So, you've utilized it for an ongoing item that we have to maintain, then we don't get to utilize it again. So, we have to be very, very prudent in making that choice. And we would want to make sure that we bring all those options to you and allow our taxpayer the opportunity to have a voice, so that we've explored all the options. And we know if we are going to utilize it, it's because we have to utilize it.
And this is kind of being proactive in allowing us the authority to make some decisions if we have to.
Correct.
But with the full understanding that, you know, the headline should not read, we're raising the mil levy, because we're not.
We're not, 100%.
Okay, thank you. Ben?
So, thank you for the presentation. One of the things that's been roaming around my brain during the presentation is the data out of the Project Wichita, the data out of the Chung Report, basically saying that we as Wichitaans don't invest enough in our communities. And I was just, another thing that's rolling around in my brain is the, a 1% raise is $3 million. And, and the other thing that's roaming around through my brain right now is in those same reports, Project Wichita, Chung Report, the number-one demographic that Wichita loses, that we hemorrhage the most of in people, is highly educated young women. And it's, it's just a, it's, all of these things just combined together. And it's, it's, it's just something to think about, so.
Ernestine?
Well, let me piggyback on that. As the teachers in Denver are out on the picket line today, Wichita, or specifically Kansas, is number 42 in the nation as far as teacher salaries. We have done such a good job this year of trying to show our, well, I think we've done a good job. I hope the teachers think so, too. Of trying to say to them how much we appreciate them, that we need, but it's not enough. We do need to continue to do more for our teachers, more for our employees, so they not only know we appreciate them, but that we're getting them to somewhere close to where it would be a fair, professional salary, professional income. The, even if we do this, that house, the proverbial house on our list, it's a dollar and a half a month increase in taxes. That's not even, I mean, it used, we used to say 50 cents would buy you a cup of coffee. Well, you'd know what a cup of coffee costs nowadays. A dollar and a half, so I don't see how there could be any question, because everybody has been telling me, oh, I'm so glad you're, we're doing things to help get good teachers to come here. We're 42nd, and when Oklahoma gave their teachers a raise, Oklahoma even passed us and is higher on the, on the list. We have got to keep on doing whatever we can. And people, companies do come to a city because of its education. They come and bring their business and their executives and their employees because of a good workforce that can get a good education for their families. I just don't see any way, okay, I spout it. One other thing I wanted to say was that this does remind me of that, at home, I've, I've got one of those loans that I could take out on my principal, I mean, on my equity?
Home equity line.
But I don't have to take it out if I don't want to. But if I have an emergency, I can tap that. And that sounds to me like what we're doing here is that we've got a place in which we can tap if we need to, so we don't let our employees down, we don't let our children down. And we're not totally dependent upon the whims, well, I'll stop there, dot, dot, dot.
Mike?
I'd like to make a motion, and Susan, I may need your help on this to get it correct. But I would like to move that we increase the LOB percentage from 30% to 33% and do the paperwork we need to do.
Just a bit of clarification. We're not raising the mil levy, we're raising the authority for the mil levy.
Right, you would just be giving authority.
Apply for the authority.
And again, is that something you want to do tonight, or do you want to wait?
I would like to move that we, we move for the, apply for the authority to 33%. Is that the correct way to say it?
I believe it is.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. Stan?
I would, I would encourage that we, we've got the information tonight. And I would encourage that we put it in on the March agenda. Because this is a lot, this is a lot of information. You're also going to want to percolate over some of the information. And you still have some time for the April 1st vote.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor that we will need to vote on.
Yes.
Okay, so are there any other comments before we vote?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, Mike?
Stan, I appreciate your comments there. But, you know, the information that we've got in front of us is excellent and clear. I mean, there's, it's not something that, you know, is, there's nothing ambiguous in it about it to me other than the fact that we need to have a safety net. And our contingency reserve continues to go down, which we only have six days of contingency reserve at this time. So, we're, you know, we're losing everywhere. And we're this close to cutting again. And, you know, this is, this is a pretty simple deal. We can, if we do it, we pass it, we don't need it, we don't use it. I don't think we're hurting anybody's pocketbooks by doing this. And I think it's important that we protect our budget and ourselves, so that we're not getting people coming in and saying that we're not getting test scores because our kids aren't getting the education they need. We're not got the programs, we don't have this, we don't have that. You know, we've got to protect ourselves some way, and this is the way to do it. And it's something that we've considered year after year and not, just not done it because it was just not the right time. I think now it's the right time, and it's just an authority, it's not, we're changing the budget. And I think that's important to remember in our minds, too, that we're just giving us an option for a safety net. Because in the future, maybe this year. Because, you know, all it'll take is legislature to pass an amendment that stops the lawsuit, and we're done. We're at the mercy of everybody else in the world, and that's a poor place to be. And if we can do this and give ourselves an opportunity, now's the time to do it. And that way, we don't have something that we miss and hurt ourselves in the end. You know, I just, this is something that's important to me.
Julie?
I'm putting you on the spot, kind of. Is there any advantage or disadvantage for you as you move forward in the coming months preparing information for us? And is there any advantage of going ahead and notifying the state now as opposed to notifying the state after our next board meeting? Or is there any disadvantage to you of notifying now as opposed to notifying next month?
So, I don't think there's any disadvantage.
Okay.
The advantage, obviously, would be, I have my marching orders, and I can proceed and move forward with those next steps. And be sure, since this is new, I've not done a resolution of this kind before. So, I want to be sure that we cross our Ts and dot our Is. And so, I have ample time and don't feel the pressure. Because our board meeting in March is not until, I think it's after spring break. So, that timeline gets tight at that point. So, certainly, from my seat, the sooner we turn this around, the better, as far as getting all those wheels in motion. I don't see a disadvantage, other than if the board would want some time to, you know, consider it.
And again, if we, if we would go ahead and give the notice to the state, we're not making a decision at this point in time to utilize that.
Correct.
We're simply just giving notice to the state that we want to have the ability to do it if we want to.
Right, and then, once we provide that notice, then we go, we move forward with putting the notice in the paper. And we put it out for that 40-day window and see if the, if our voting population has an issue.
Okay, Ernestine?
And if we get the permission, and we get the 33%, but we do not use it this year, we could choose to use it next year, or not use it next year, or the next year after that, or not use it. Just because we have the authority doesn't mean that we have to use it now, or it's not one of those use it or lose it things?
Right, it's not use it or lose it. And then, you don't have to use up, you don't have to use the full. You can use any fraction thereof.
Okay, so it's just...
Right, I mean, you could be at 30.5, 31.2. I mean, you can be at any, anywhere in between.
Stan, so just to apply for it and get approved for it, we don't have to use it, and we don't have to use it next year, or?
Correct.
Okay.
And one of the things, I want to make sure that with Julie and everybody, we'd have to vote on... to vote on that again to change the mil levy. That's not something we can just do. We'd have to take that to a vote of the board. So we'd have to have another vote just to do it. So it's not something that we're saying, Susan, if you want to raise it tomorrow, go ahead. We've still got to vote on it. And that's something that I think might be getting lost in this conversation too. Sorry to butt in, but I...
Stan?
No, that's okay. Now, we do have a consent agenda meeting with our 99% award coming up here fairly soon.
Yes.
And then we also have the authority to call special meetings if we had to. I still think, I would just encourage you to, to take a step, you know, before, or take a beat, is the proper term, before the, before you just move forward. But all the arguments are very valid on, on everything you're saying about what your, our authority is. I'm not arguing that point.
Okay, I'm going to call for the question, because we do have a motion on the floor made by Mike and seconded by Ernestine, to go ahead and allow Susan to file for the authority for us to raise the LOB. So please cast your votes. Oops, mine didn't register in. Yeah, mine didn't register in.
Julie's didn't either.
Well, my vote is yes.
My vote is yes.
Okay, the motion passes 6-1. Susan, you have your marching orders.
Thank you very much.